For action on a proposed type variance for a fence at Two Carolin Way, a storage shed within the front yard setback at Two Carolin Way. And the approval of amendments in November. Are...
(inaudible)
Oh, and a setback for Lynn Taylor's way. Is Stacy Byford here? Come up to the table, please. Last time we sent you away and said come back with more.
Mm-hmm.
And you're here.
Here.
Do you want to make your presentation?
Well, I made copies of this. I redid. I think the problem that we had last time was that the drawing was insufficient.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think more incomplete than inaccurate, so...
Okay. Thank you.
I did my best to include on that.
And why didn't we get these prior to the meeting?
I didn't know that I was supposed to supply them. I didn't even really know for sure until today that I was on the agenda for today. I don't get notice of anything.
Stacy, do you have one?
Yeah.
Are the people who might be affected by this aware that it's on the agenda tonight? There was no agenda on the web.
Okay.
And I am concerned that anyone who might be affected by this would be unaware that we were dealing with this matter tonight.
Okay.
Well, does those people get letters?
You propose that we table this?
My understanding was tonight wasn't supposed to be like the public hearing. We were going to redo what we did last time, which was just a meeting here for you all to decide whether it could go to a public meeting.
I don't know that that's something that we do. I mean, this is... I mean, we don't do trial runs, so it seems to me that if we're going to be discussing this, people who are affected by it need to be aware that we're doing that. So I guess I would propose we table it.
Okay.
I don't mean to be difficult with you, but we have to be fair.
Let me ask this question before we take any action on this. Did you notify your neighbors that you were applying for this variance?
In writing?
No. My understanding was, the way Holly Esposito explained it to me, was that there would be an initial meeting where you all would decide if you would even consider giving me the variance. And if the answer was no, you wouldn't consider giving me the variance, there would be no need to have my neighbors come to a meeting.
Okay.
So that's the meeting we had last time. And because the drawing that I had was insufficient, you wanted to do over that meeting and asked me to come back with a more complete drawing.
All right.
No one ever told me anything about notifying neighbors because I thought that was the next step in the process.
Well, I'm sorry. You really didn't understand the process because at this point, the only thing we can do is to table this.
Yeah. I think that is the only thing we can do.
Which means you'll be coming back again next month.
Okay.
So Katie, you move to table?
I move to table second.
And it's been moved second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign? Table.
Okay.
I just have a question before you go. How do you have a carport in the back of the house?
It's not the back, it's the side.
Can I just add something also? Is when I was going over this application with the building department, I was told that's why Rich is here. He's here to give explanation about the shed. And so he took time out of his day to come and talk about that. And him and Stacy have been talking. And so, and I confirmed with the clerks and Holly that this was going to be a preliminary review of the application, which is how I think everything goes, which is by the Green Acres Properties here as well. We just review the application to see if it is complete or not, and then from there, set a public hearing date.
That was my understanding, too.
Okay, so you have more information here. So, and actually, I was going to ask when the motion was made, is there... When do we discuss it? Do we...
If we table it, no.
Oh. Oh.
Can we ask questions?
I suppose you can ask questions, yeah.
So if we've already moved to table it, can we hold the table and have discussion? Or... I mean, I don't know the Roberts rules well enough to know.
It's been a long time since I looked at Roberts, too.
But here is my fundamental concern.
Yes.
I think that anybody who is going to be affected by this...
Yes.
Needs to be here and able to hear what is going on. It has nothing to do with the merits of it. It is simply procedural. People who are affected by an action need to have the ability to follow it through all of its steps. And the fact that there was no agenda up on the web, I didn't know we were going to be doing this tonight.
Well, you got an email, because I got an email. The agenda was on.
I didn't know.
You got an email.
I did not get an email with an agenda. I got an email with an agenda for the town, for the village board, but not our agenda.
Well, I got it.
I emailed everybody on the board, plus everyone on the planning board, plus everybody on the village board.
But I am looking...
Absolutely, everybody.
I am looking at my email right now.
If you want to give me your correct email address, maybe it's not updated in the address book we have.
I have been consistently getting emails.
You copied everybody. That's maybe why you were confused.
Okay. What was the date it was sent out?
Yesterday.
So 1/13...
It was yesterday.
Was it? I'm pretty sure I was...
It was yesterday.
Yeah, I was working yesterday.
1/13, I received a decision for 1/27 Main Street. On 1/10, I received draft agenda for 2014-01-08. And when I opened that draft agenda, it is not for the ZBA, but view online command, but for the village board.
Here, I emailed...
It's draft minutes, New Paltz Village Board.
The one that I sent was at 11:27 a.m. yesterday, and it was sent to K.A.T.Y.S.I.I.B.S.
Carl, might I ask the question? Well, maybe this one.
Yeah, sure.
You have not called for a hearing on this.
No.
This is just discussion.
That's right.
The notification that Katie's talking about is for the hearing.
Okay.
And therefore, there is no hearing tonight. You're in a discussion mode.
Right.
Stacy may decide after what you've all said, she doesn't want to be bothered anymore. So I think the solution might be is to withdraw the table, sit and discuss with Stacy and with our building inspector.
Okay.
Okay.
And then call for a hearing the next meeting.
I don't think we would have been happy about tabling it if we'd known that there was someone here with extra information for it. So we need that kind of information at the beginning, Carl. And I would, at this same moment, I would ask whether there... I know we've talked about this, and perhaps I've simply blanked on it, but we... Exactly what are our procedures? And what exactly is the timeline for applicants? And who needs to be present and/or who needs to be notified by when? Because I'm sitting here thinking to myself that I've screwed this up because I also assumed this was for discussion by us. And if I'm wrong, then I will need to get clear about this, certainly for future kinds of things. So I guess maybe what I'm saying is, what I would like, what I would like to see happen is for us to be able to have the discussion, and at the same time, for us to be to, in whatever Roberts rules fashion we need to do this, clarify what the procedures are for submitting an application, the timeline for submitting an application to the ZBA, and who does what. We need it in writing, actually. It should be sort of a thing that's part of an orientation for new people.
Yeah.
New secretaries and as well as board members.
I'd be dropped up something.
Carl, isn't all this stuff in the booklet that we got?
We didn't get a booklet.
Are you talking about the zoning code?
Yes.
I have it here.
Yeah.
Well, that is...
Anyway, should we just rescind the motion?
Zoning code is different. I move that we rescind the motion? Do we need a move?
Yeah. Is there a second or rescinding?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
I seconded it, yeah.
Is there discussion?
About rescinding the motion?
Yeah. Ready to vote? All in favor of rescinding the motion to table? Say aye.
Aye.
Hold the like sign? Okay. Now, here we are, ready for discussion.
Okay. So would it be appropriate to open the discussion by clarifying what the steps are that an applicant has to take? That way, we're all clear about where we are in the scheme of things with this application as starters.
Okay.
Would that... I don't know how people feel about that, so...
Well, I think, I think that since these people are here, we should discuss this, and then if they want to stay here and listen to this, then, you know, we have to have some sort of looking for.
Input.
It needs some input, but we need to be respectful of people that are giving up their time.
But at the same time...
Well, we can do that afterwards, and anybody that wants to stay can stay.
But we might want the input of the building inspector.
Well, he can stay if he wants to. I think we should do the discussion of this first and then do that.
I would like to hear from the building inspector to start off our discussion.
Will the building inspector please come forward and give us whatever input you have?
Hi, Rich Travis. I'm one of the building inspectors here in the village. And, you know, I apologize for any confusion that may have come from me. It was my understanding from the village clerk that I was just, you know, requested to be at this meeting for the purposes of some discussion about, you know, the variances that were... or the variance that was needed and some discussion about that. And so that's why I'm here. As far as procedurally, what I understood was what, you know, Holly had told the applicants and has been telling applicants, you know, what the procedure would be, excuse me, for, you know, ZBA meetings, first meeting would be discussion type of a thing, and then a public hearing would be set the next month. If that is indeed not the case, then I think we just all need to get on the same page with that. And then from our office, you know, since we deal with applicants, you know, before they get here, we'll make whatever changes we need to make going forward.
Okay. What are we doing first? The fence or the shed are both together?
Fence is on the agenda. The first exit is the agenda.
So, just to be clear, at this point, we have... I have the application that's dated 10/28/13.
Yeah. No, I have...
For the fence. This is for the fence.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. So this is the... So, and it's 13... Two, what is it? Two and 13, 13-07? Is that the number on the tablet page? Or is it... I can't quite read it. Or is it ZB... No.
What are you talking about? The application number? ZB 13-07? Okay. Seven... Seven, seven. Okay. So this fence is between you and John and whatever name it is. I'm your neighbor over in the... With the Japanese garden and the big brown house and the big addition and all that.
Oh, okay.
John and Rita, yes.
Yeah.
And this map that you just gave us is the new map to supplement. So this map, what are we dating this map? Today's date?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's...
14.
14-13. Why do you want an eight-foot fence along that side?
I need an eight-foot fence along that side as opposed to a six-foot fence, which is what I'd like to put across the, what I call the back of the property, I guess you all consider it the side of the property. Because my property there slopes down quite a lot, and I just built a stone patio, and they also have a stone patio in their backyard, and it's just completely visible in a six-foot fence. I measured a six-foot fence. We would still each be able to see, well, I would be able to see over there, over the fence into their patio.
And do you want this eight-foot fence? You want it to be 25 feet long?
Right. It doesn't need to be the full length of that side of the property, just the length of the patio.
And then you would drop down to a six-foot fence?
Or no fence at all.
No fence at all.
Right.
Okay. You want a six-foot fence across the back?
Right.
All the way across?
Yes.
I guess you can have that anyway.
Well, no. The zoning code is very specific. The side of the property where the carport is, as defined by the zoning code, is the front yard.
It's the front yard, but it really isn't.
But it really, right. So what's happening is the front line of the building, because the code says from the front line of the building forward that that fence needs to be four feet. So that portion of the fence, which is actually going to be in the back rear of the house, but from that corner of the house there, that north eastern corner of the house to, towards the street, Henry W. DeBois, that would need a two-foot variance for it in order to be a six-foot fence. Because the code says it needs to be four feet from the front line of the building forward.
And this doesn't show us that request.
Well, yes, it does.
Could you draw online the lines that indicate what you're proposing?
Sure.
It's a six-foot fence all the way across. Right?
Right. Okay.
Why did I hear a request for an eight-foot fence?
You know, where we live, I think eight-foot fences all around the whole house are very apropos because the deer can jump over a six-foot fence, and the deer devastate my very expensive garden. So I've had my say.
Deer can do eight feet as well. And this might be considered a self-imposed hardship because the patio was constructed with not, without an eight-foot fence.
Does that explain it to you there, where the two-foot, that two-foot section? You kind of have to try to explain it in my letter of denial that I'm sure you all have a copy of.
This, this letter came to us after our meeting in December. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes. Because, yeah, I wasn't aware that there was a, at that point, that there was a, an application for the fence. So that's why I did the denial letter up.
Okay.
You know, at the request of the office.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So you're saying that the only variance that's required is...
That portion of the fence...
From here to here?
Yes. Would be a two-foot variance for that portion of the fence.
It's here.
From there to there. And then there would be another two-foot variance on that...
This is the front line.
On that southerly side.
Oh, my God.
Where it, the code says it has to be six feet.
Which is south.
And it would have to be...
We need that in... We really need that. Yeah, this is really hard to...
I don't see enough on this side.
Which side? Right here. Look. Right here. Propose 25-foot, eight-foot fence, right there.
Okay, so here.
And this is the six-foot fence.
Yeah, two-foot variance there. And then from this line forward to here.
Okay.
The two-feet variance there.
So this whole back line would be six feet?
Yeah.
Because the only issue about a variance is...
Is here and here.
Well, I hear you. So is, do I have it right? Is that the two-foot variance? Uh, right.
Yeah, that's one of them.
Yes, 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 yes.
See, this is a real weird setup because they consider this the front of the house.
This is the east.
But this is really the front of the house.
And this portion of the fence from here to here, this 25 feet, where it's proposed eight foot, that would need a two-foot variance also. Because the code says that that needs to be six feet.
So if you look...
So this portion from here to here, a 25-foot portion of that needs a two-foot variance.
Where is the 25-foot portion? It's not clear.
Yeah, right here. See, propose eight-foot fence, 25 feet.
Yeah, where is the 25 feet?
From the corner, 25, 25 feet this way, so...
So where is that? Here. About where the... In order for the whole thing to be six feet.
Where the patio ends.
So six feet.
Yep, patio is 25 feet long.
Patio right here, right about here.
Is allowed from here to here. In order for this whole thing to be six feet, you need a variance of two feet and a variance of two feet. Is that the all the entire, is that all the entire, or that's all we're talking about variance? Are these two pieces?
For the fence. Those two pieces, yes, yes.
For the side.
And what about for the side?
Yes.
What?
Those portions of them, yes.
Okay. So four feet. We're looking at a...
25 feet plus four feet.
Where's the 25 feet?
I have a, I have a question because I think we might be talking about two variances right now.
Here to here.
Yeah, I think we're talking about, Carl, three instead of two variances. Well, I'm not even talking about the shed right now, but, well, yeah, we have to do one for each side of the house.
Is this the only eight-feet, eight-foot section?
Yep.
Eight-foot. I'll do it in a second.
Yeah, I have that listed on the denial as two separate, as two variances.
Yes. And is there a fence along here? And that, actually, I feel strongly about because it makes it hard for people going back from the river. So this is...
Yeah, that's right. I mean, you have a copy of my denial letter?
And I would just like to...
I didn't realize this was on the agenda.
Ellen, I also just want to make sure it's clear that everyone understands we're talking probably about three variances when considering the fence.
Right.
The first one would be from Henry DeBois to the beginning of the house would be a height variance, or, yeah, a six-foot height variance. From the edge of the stone patio to the other side of the property line would be a second one. And then the 25 feet of eight-foot fence would be a third one.
No, it would be two. It would be two. The eight-foot section is just this portion?
Yeah.
Yeah. This, this can be six feet here. It's just from this corner to the, to the front, in a front yard, it can only be four.
From here to here, it can be six?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's just, it would be this variance here, one here, and this one here.
Thank you.
So wait, are you saying that no variance is required for this line here along Henry DeBois?
That fence that's on Henry DeBois has been existing and has a CO, an existing CO.
So it's not in play?
Not, not at this point. I wasn't going to revisit something that already has a CO on it.
So we're talking about one piece, two pieces, three pieces?
Yeah, you're talking about a fence that's going to be built, it's not there, that'll have, you know, two height variances.
Two variances.
The one, the one up front, that's one variance, and then the other one over there in the back.
Oh, the 25-foot, the eight-foot fence.
The eight-foot fence.
Oh.
Because that portion is going to be six foot, which the code allows.
This portion here?
Is six foot.
Oh, so this is not a...
Here, there is six feet, that's allowed.
Right. But what about from here to here?
No. We're doing a variance. We're doing a variance here, doing a variance here, and we're doing a variance there.
And how...
Oh, David, actually, I just want to make sure that, because Rich just said that the, that the fence from the stone patio to the beginning of the eight-foot fence, you do not need a variance, is what he was just saying.
Oh, no, it needs a variance.
And that's why I think we need to all make sure...
There's no house there, so you need a variance.
And I think that's why we have to make sure that we're on the same page.
That easterly, that easterly side of the fence, the east side.
This one?
Right, along the patio. The fence is six feet there.
Right.
All the way from the property, the northeastern property point to the southeastern property point. That only needs one variance, and it's the front portion that needs a two-foot variance. The eight-foot portion is just along the southerly line.
So why does this not need a variance?
Because six-foot fence is what the code designates, that it's to be six feet.
Even though it's not along the house?
Yeah, well, that's the, the height requirement in the code for fences.
Oh, that's, yeah.
It only comes into play in front, in front yards. And I can tell you in theory why, why this, why this four-foot is, is in there in theory because, and a front yard...
Two feet.
Yeah, well, why the code says that it needs to be four feet in theory when they write these is because front yard, you may be exiting there onto a roadway, and it's for visual. I can say that that doesn't take place here because the driveway for this house is on the westerly side. And so that, in theory, for what, why that, why that is there was for a sight thing, it doesn't come into play here. It doesn't cause any type of danger, any type of sight blocking for anyone else that's driving either. So that, that, that in theory is why that, that is, you know, it's my understanding. That's why I've seen these in other jurisdictions and why the code usually says that, that height requirement is there. And in this instance, there's no one, not even a neighboring property that exits on this portion of that property. Ms. Byford exits here on the westerly portion and then Caroline Way onto Henry DeBois.
Okay. So just to be clear, I'm saying it back to you.
Sure.
Just to be clear. There is no requirement for a variance. This fence can stay as is because it's already there and it was approved?
Yes, it has a current CO, yes.
Okay. The two pieces we're talking about are one, two-foot section of six-foot fence that is only in play because it goes up to Henry DeBois.
Well, it's a two-foot variance for the height of the fence. I'm not sure the, the full length of that.
No, but over here.
Yeah, that, that portion from the front of the house to the corner.
Right. So we'll say two feet plus or minus. Yeah. But the point of it is, the reason that it would require a variance is because it abuts, it, it joins up to Henry DeBois.
Well, because the code says in a front yard.
Right.
And that is considered the front yard by definition in the zoning code. And that is because when you have, the zoning code is very specific. If you have a corner lot...
Right.
The wider the two streets, Caroline Drive is a private road, Henry DeBois is a wider street.
Right.
That, the code says then that that is considered the front yard.
Right.
And then front yard requirements apply there. And so that would be that portion of it that would need the two-foot variance for, you know, from that corner to the corner of that front line of the house run, run over.
And this section here?
Yeah.
Stacy could have a fence of what height?
Six feet.
Six feet, so what she's asking for is...
Is an eight-foot fence.
Two feet in height here.
Yes.
And two feet in height here.
Yes.
So effectively, two, two-foot sections of fence.
Yes.
Each of them requiring, requesting a two-foot height variance.
Yes, and that's how I divide, that's how I...
But we don't have total length.
I had, you know, divide them up as two separate variances.
Now, how will this be achieved? Are you going to rip down all the fences and put up new fencing?
There's no fence there currently.
Okay, so there is nothing?
No, there's nothing.
Nothing at all, there's only this?
There's woods.
Yes, there's no fence there now.
So this is all brand new?
Yes.
Okay. Stacy, there are five criteria that we consider. You don't have to meet all five criteria, but these are things that we are to consider when granting a variance. And if you could address each of these.
Okay.
Will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood? Or will it be detrimental to nearby properties?
I would say no and no, and I say no and no only because I can't imagine, I can't conceive of any reason why the answer would be yes.
Tell me about that.
I can agree with her, I know what the, I know, I know the place.
Okay, but I don't... And so I would like to know about the house that is just to the south of you. How are they going to, how is an eight-foot fence going to affect them?
Um, I think it'll affect them just in the sense that from their patio, they won't be able to see on my patio.
Okay, would it affect the sun that they receive?
No.
I'm just asking. You know, I mean, these are the things we're supposed to be considering. Okay, so now the next question is whether the benefit you are seeking from these fences could be achieved by a method that would not require a variance. What have you considered doing that wouldn't require a variance?
The only thing that I'm aware of that would allow me to have the same height of the fence would be to do excavation and to fill the south, southern part of the yard there so that when the fence went on the land, the land would be higher. It's a very wooded area there, there's a lot of trees there, and just, you know, the expense to excavate that area, 25-square-foot area, I think would be, for me, it would be prohibitively expensive.
Okay, have you considered some kind of landscaping?
I did consider in that particular area where I'm asking for the eight-foot fence, I did consider planting some, what are they called, mature, fully mature arborvitae. I don't know whether it was the people that owned this house before me, or if it was John and Rita who live next door. Someone planted arborvitae all along the length there, and they all died. And it was suggested to me it's because the soil there is not, there's a lot of shale or something, and also the cost of those trees would be, I think, very expensive.
What's the dear view?
Okay, I'm just going through the questions.
No, I'm telling you because I know.
Okay, now, another thing is whether the requested variance is substantial. And being simple-minded, I really appreciate it when other people do little calculations and say, "I'm requesting that this variance is, you know, 25% of what was there." If you can look at it in some way, help us understand how substantial the variance is that you're requesting.
Are we talking about the eight-foot section again?
Yeah.
The eight-foot section of fence?
Well, no, I'm, actually, I would, one of the things I will ask you is I think this should be two variances, two applications. I don't want you to have to pay more money for it. But I think from a record-keeping perspective, a variance gets granted. And when they put two variances onto one application, when people try and backtrack later on to find out why this was done, it's hard to find stuff in the paperwork. So if there are two variances for two different pieces of fence, I mean, you're asking for two different variances here. And if it was just split on one sheet, we don't have to charge any...
Well, I can take responsibility for that. I just looked at it as one application. And usually when I look at an application for even an accessory building, say a garage, that needs a height variance, maybe even another variance, I'll list those variances that, you know, whether there's one, two, three, or four, we'll all go with that same building permit application. I kind of looked at this the same way because it is an application for a fence. And with two, I understand what you're saying, I just, I think we'd have to, which I could do, you know, we could do that, I'd have to, it would have to be something that I, we did in our office because I, I could take responsibility for the fact that it was on one variance application just because the fence came through as, you know, just an application for a fence. I would necessarily divide that up.
Let me just play devil's advocate with this for a minute, without tipping my hand. I'm sorry, but let's say that we felt comfortable granting one of the var, one, one fence, but not the other, and that the only way we could vote yes or no would be to do it as a package.
No.
I don't know that you could do that.
We can vote one and not the other just because it's on one application.
The reason that I...
How is it just more paperwork?
The reason I'm trying to agree with you about the two different variances is because in the one instance, we're going to a six-foot fence, which is pretty ordinary.
Yeah.
In the other instance, we're going to an eight-foot fence. And I think that the community, really dear aside, need to be able to act more conservatively vis-à-vis an eight-foot fence. An eight-foot fence is a high fence. So I can certainly understand if these were two separate variances, not because it's two different fences, you know, so much, I mean, but because we're talking about two different, what's it, precedence approving a six-foot fence and approving an eight-foot fence.
I guess from my perspective, I would have to have some type of discussion then with, you know, the, the board prior to making, you know, a determination as to what you would feel would, would, you know, govern two separate permit applications as opposed to just the one. So, I mean, it's something we certainly could do out of our office. I don't know where that maybe ends though, you know, with, we could talk about it and do some, some, you know, it was my thinking, you know, like I said, that it was an application for a fence and it was just because of the nature of the way it was, it was two separate variances. Like I said, even if it was a garage, it was getting a height variance and then a setback variance.
We already, we already approved an eight-foot fence for the people in that same neighborhood.
In 10.
Number 10.
We could do it. I'd have to do it with some kind of discussion with the board prior to, you know, otherwise, you know, out of my office, I'm going to make a decision. I'm going to make a decision to take an application and look at it. And then if, you know, as a board, you're not comfortable with it just being on one application. So I guess, you know, if, if you wanted to go that route, there'd have to be some kind of communication prior to me giving a denial and to, to, you know, be able to direct the applicants to separate these in two separate applications.
Okay.
Which I'm not saying...
I suggest, Rich, that you've got a problem doing two application because she should not have to pay twice.
No, I don't want her to have to pay twice.
And that becomes the complicated part for the office downstairs. If she is applying for a fence, she is applying for a fence, it's your job, it seems to me, in your motion to approve or disapprove, to have two or three separate motions depending upon if you believe it's a segmented variance being requested.
Right.
So the onus is on this board not to make one motion.
Thank you, Sally.
You're welcome.
Did you want to finish?
Yeah, I do want to finish.
And then I have some questions.
Okay, just to get these all out there, this is a slightly different thing, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. And I think you've kind of answered that.
I'd say no.
And then the last thing is whether an alleged difficulty is self-created. And, I mean, it's, you, you don't get knocked out because you have yes on one of them.
Okay, I, I mean, I don't see how it's self-created other than the fact that I did build a stone patio. I purposely built a patio instead of seeking a permit to build a deck because I wanted to try and be as low as possible. But no matter how low, I mean, even if I didn't have a patio just standing out in the backyard, I hoped to put a hot tub out there at some point, it's just, it's so open. And my neighbor's patio is like right there, and they spend a lot of time on their patio. So even to be in the backyard, whether there's a patio or not, it's the only place on my entire property that my kids can play, and I just would like them to have some privacy.
Let me ask the building inspector something. If the, if the fence were put at the edge of the patio, would she need a variance? If it's going to be a six-foot fence?
Not for a six-foot fence, but the, the only issue there, I think, would be that it wouldn't be able to be right at the edge of the patio because there's some built-in steps.
Well, yeah.
But, 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 no, I know what you're saying, right here, I mean...
Not at the property line, no.
Well, I, I don't, I guess, I don't know how much closer because that property does, I was out there taking several measurements, not only for this, but really for the shed. And that property does kind of drop off, you know, pretty good, right?
And I know it drops off.
Yeah. So, and with the trees and stuff there, I mean, maybe a six-foot fence, I'm not sure where it would end up. And that might take away from, you know, the kids having an area, which was, was that one of the things, I think, so...
Also, one of the things that we discussed when we talked about thing Caroline Way is you plant a fence, it's sort of, it's not really the property line, but it's sort of to be understood as a property line, especially as time goes by. You don't want to cut your property line short for whatever reason, so...
You really have to, you really have to put a fence a foot, eighteen, two feet in from the property line so that if you have to paint it or repair it or anything, you don't have to walk on somebody else's property.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know, that's more probably a question for Ms. Byford about the location of that and whether that would be a doable type of situation.
Question about how this will look. This will look like a straight line, it'll just be deeper in these areas? How will, how will this look?
Well, this, this isn't going to be a fence, this is going to remain open, this area, this is going to remain open. I only want the fence right here just to, to, you know, protect the, for my, that's why I wrote just 25 feet. This is 115 feet long, my property line.
Okay, now we're getting down to it.
I only want privacy for the patio.
So 25 feet of eight-foot fence here.
Yes.
And here it will be a brand-new six-foot fence.
Correct.
And then you need to make it...
Well, it'll still be six foot here, except apparently this is only supposed to be four, so it would be two feet taller, so it would be the same height as the rest of the fence.
People coming down to DeBois are not going to have their vision...
You can't even see the area, you need to put out there.
Right, yeah, no, it's, it's for an award. Now, my question is, if, if something like this were to go into the record with our decision, would it be clear to anybody in the future what in the world went on here?
I think, I think, well, I think it would have to go into the record with my narrative in my letter of denial, because in my letter, I tried to be very specific. You know, a six-foot high fence is proposed to be constructed from the front north property line along the east property line to the rear. And, and so I think that that narrative would have to go in there.
This would be enough? Okay.
I would, you know, if, if the board doesn't feel like it's enough, you could advise the applicant to...
Well, you can see the difficulty we've been having grasping what is on paper.
Okay.
Would it be, yeah, would it be possible to draw a different kind of line here?
Like a color-coded or something if you wanted, yeah.
Or thicker, I mean, it doesn't, you know, I, I don't care about it being in color, but just something that made it clear that the fence would start here, the fence would end here. And I would like, you know, like the...
Dimensions, sure. Well, I can direct the applicant, or the board can direct the applicant to do that.
And then the same thing over here, and yeah, dimensions would be nice. And I assume that from here going south, there's a upward slope, right?
No.
No.
It's, it's completely flat here.
Just keeps going down.
Goes down, flat, and goes down a little more into that. I didn't really examine that.
That's why their property is quite a bit lower than mine, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Their patio is lower than mine, that's the problem.
Wait, wait, why is that a problem?
It's a problem because they can see from their patio onto my patio and vice. More importantly, I can see from their patio, from my patio onto their patio.
Ah, okay, so they should like this theoretically?
I would think so unless they want to see, you know, my kids' corner.
No, no, if it were a question of light, that would be my only concern.
You know, the last, the last, the last eight-foot fence that we had a problem with.
Yeah.
We talked about doing a six-foot fence with an open top fence. Well, there is a solution to this problem where they can have the privacy, but the upper two feet can still be open, okay?
Meaning trellising, or whatever.
Yeah, trellis or whatever, you know, I've, it's in my head.
Yeah, which is what we did for the other, for 10.
And I don't see any reason why we couldn't, you know, do the same thing for this. Would that be acceptable to you?
I'm not sure I understand. You're suggesting the fence stays six foot and then you attach something to the top of it?
The whole thing goes all together.
Oh.
But the bottom part, the six feet which are allowed, could be a solid fence of any choosing. Then in the design, the upper two feet would be an open, more open design, but it can be designed so that it's open, but you don't see through it from certain angles, okay?
You could buy it that way. I mean, this doesn't have to be custom-built. There, this is, these are, there are a variety of these.
Have you been looking at fences?
No, not really.
Okay.
If she looks at the courtyard at the library, that is a solid fence with an open top, which is what they're talking about.
Mm-hmm. Or you could come to my house and look in my backyard.
It's actually very, it's actually more attractive because it means you don't have this eight-foot wall in your fence. You have the effect of an eight-foot wall.
I guess the only question would be then I would have the fence that runs already, pre-existing along Henry DeBois Road.
No, 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 I'm talking about the eight-foot.
No, 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 I know, I'm just saying it will be different then, you know, it's going to be one, it's going to be one consistent fence.
The bottom, I was just saying, the six feet on the bottom.
Right.
And then this would just...
Let's put it this way, if that was my only option, I would take it and run. If it meant that or nothing.
Is on the lay of the land...
It's going to stick out two feet more anyway.
On the lay of the land, is this, is the slope going to mean that this fence is even with this fence approximately?
No.
Okay.
Here will be two... No, it's going to be considered, no, it's going to be lower because the property plummets down there.
So the eighth, okay.
The eighth fence, the height is still going to be lower than the six-foot fence.
If I'm standing on your patio and I'm looking at this fence here and here. I'm seeing a fence that goes, and I'm making up numbers now.
Okay.
I'm seeing a fence that goes to six feet here.
Yep.
And then from where I'm standing, this isn't in my eyes an eight-foot fence. This is more like a five or six-foot fence because the land's slow to the right. So on the other side for them, they will see an eight-foot fence.
Yeah.
Right, it will be an eight, it would be an eight-foot fence.
Right, so the, so the...
Their, their opinion would matter. Okay, I'm done with my questions.
What's your pleasure?
Is it appropriate?
Well, if you, if you want, if you want her to send, how does that work? She sends letters to the neighbors, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So if you want her to send letters to the neighbor, huh?
The planning, the building department doesn't do that?
No, they...
I do that, I, I generate the list.
You send?
That's what I thought.
I send, I generate the list and then I'll give, I'll give you the, all the thing I drafted. I'll give you the public hearing notice, we'll put it in the paper, the works, yeah.
You'll send letters to the neighbors?
I personally won't, no.
Oh, who sends letters to the neighbors?
The applicant.
The applicant, okay.
Okay, so you know who your neighbors are, you probably don't have to send them, you probably type them off.
I just don't have many of my neighbors. Is it only the neighbors that are contingent from my property?
It's just John and Rich, John and Rich Stephens and Polly and...
Yeah.
What's their name that we, what is the name of the...
Felice and Perry.
Yeah.
It's a specified distance, I think, in the code.
All right, I'll figure it out.
Ah. We generate that list for her.
I already know about it.
And then there's also, you'll put up a sign that PDQ already has pre-made once you give them the notice.
Oh, yeah. Now, isn't there another application? Are we just doing this one first?
We have one for the shed.
So now, so now we can make a mo, I make a motion, we table this on next meeting. It's for a second.
No, 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 wait, is that what we do when we make a motion, schedule a hearing?
Schedule the first party hearing.
It's a motion to schedule the hearing.
Okay, so whatever.
Is there a second to that?
I second, oh, okay, go ahead, let her do it. No, 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 you do it. Ellen can do it. Go ahead, Ellen.
I'm doing it. I did it. It's done.
It's a good discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those like signs, okay.
One down.
As painful as this was, I think it was a useful, I, I, it was very helpful.
All right, let's get on to the shed now. So what, I'm asking the building inspector, why, why does she need a variance for the shed? Because it's on the front property line?
Well, because it's in the front yard. The accessory structure's not supposed to be in, you know, any further than the, again, the front line of the building. And so that, that's why, because essentially the code defines that as the front yard. Now, this is the front of the house along Caroline Way where the front door is. Because it's, it abuts on two streets here... on two streets here, the same front yard requirements apply here also.
Okay, so what is...
But, go ahead.
So is, is that the reason needed variance? Because it's in the front yard?
Yes. It's closer.
Now, how about setbacks from anything?
Well, there is no, you know, that...
There is no setback in the front yard.
Right. So that's why I put that specifically in the letter to the ZBA to, you know, I mentioned that it's for this type of a structure that's 12 feet rear and side, and that I said that you would possibly, hopefully stipulate, I asked you to stipulate if, that requirement there, if you wanted to. It was also, my understanding, you could correct me if wrong, that you also wanted me to investigate, this is what I was told by the clerk, investigate the possibility of, you know, placement of the shed, you know, where there wouldn't be variances required. But because of the size of the shed and its position anywhere else, there'd be a variance required anyway. Right.
What is the size of the shed?
It's on there.
Eight and a half by 11.
Eight and a half.
Excuse me, please. What did you say? Eight and a half by 11?
By 11.
It's not, it's not New York's apartment. Seven-foot height. Yes.
So that, yeah, that, I mean, I went out there and, you know, from my perspective, for practical purposes and, you know, what this is being used for. I mean, the contractor had determined, you know, that that was the place with, with the applicant. The contractor, initially because of a statement in the state building code, it was his understanding a shed under 144 square foot is exempt from a building permit. It is, as far as state code applies. He, and that's where he was going from. He was going from that perspective. He wasn't going from a perspective of, I'm just going to do something without notifying the building department. And so, you know, and that's why I'm here. But anywhere else that shed goes on the property, it's going to need a variance also because it's just not the space.
All right. I think because of the unusual situation of where this house is in relationship to Henry W. DuBois, I can understand why we want to put the shed there. Okay? And I can understand why it really couldn't go anywhere else.
I have a...
Thank you.
You first, please.
When I went to the property, I found the shed quite obvious. But I don't live there. So in this particular instance, I would be really interested in knowing what the neighbors who do go up that road all the time feel about it. So I don't know whether anybody has commented or anything, because you were, as you were saying, of one of the five criteria.
Yes.
Right? So...
I think that would happen at a public comment session.
And I was just wondering even whether it would be, even if you did some like landscaping here to sort of camouflage the appearance of it. But I certainly recognize that there's not very many options for where you would put it.
I mean, my thought about that is, I don't know if you remember, but I showed you pictures of it last time. Were you here last time? I think so. So I built it to match the house exactly so that it wouldn't stick out like a sore thumb. This, just so you can see, David, this is how much you can see it from the road. It's not really...
Yeah, that's where I wanted to ask you. How, what's the, do you know the approximate elevation of the road to, to this point? I mean, it goes up?
Oh, it's lower. The road is lower.
By what? Two feet, three feet, six feet?
No, I wouldn't say six feet. You're asking honestly the wrong person about elevation.
Well, I mean, is it, is it this much?
Gradually, I would say probably, yeah, from the pavement, the edge of the pavement. And it's 28 feet. No, sorry, it's 13 feet away from the pavement.
I mean, I drive by there every day and it's, it's not something where I go...
Well, you'll see it less when the fence is along the back also.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's not an eyesore.
I mean, this is already here.
Oh, yeah. No, Caroline Way, I have no idea what it looks like.
Because as he explained, my builder didn't know that a permit was...
Yeah, that was a mistake, but the contractor, I went out to the property on a complaint, spoke with the contractor. He had a misunderstanding of, of that because in several other jurisdictions I worked in, usually the town-type jurisdictions, they go with that state requirement. Under 144 square foot, they, they kind of hands-off. Here, because it's a village, I think it's, you know, and when I was in another village, same thing. They require permits for everything. But that was a, what I, from interviewing the contractor, I felt like it was an honest mistake the contractor made based on the fact that he thought under that 144 square foot that a permit wouldn't be required.
What is it from the village? The hundred?
Everything.
Everything?
Everything needs, every, every structure needs a permit, yes. That's the, that's the...
The other thing, David, and I don't know if you know since you live near to me, but I'm the only house in that cluster of homes on Caroline Way that doesn't have a garage. I'm also the only one that has two little kids with bicycles and things like that. So as far as appearance, you know, the perceived appearance when my neighbors are coming in and out of Caroline Way, I would think they'd prefer to see a pretty shed that matches the house than to see my kids' stuff strewn all over the place.
I have two questions.
Yes.
A building permit is needed to put up this hedge.
Yes.
The building permit was issued?
No.
No, it's been, it's...
Because the builder, because the builder thought that 144 square feet, you didn't need it.
Right. He built the shed. And then I went out there based on...
Wasn't responsibility on the builder, the contractor?
Well, yes.
To the rules?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. And the thing is, if we don't give, if we don't give the variance, then what you got to do? Tear the shed down?
Well, essentially, that would be what, that would be the remedy. You know, that would be...
I don't, I don't think that would be, I don't think that would be...
I mean, from a code perspective, from an enforcement's perspective, that would, that is what would happen because it's just, there's no place. And believe me, I spent, you know, more time than I usually do at the direction of the clerk from, coming from the board, which I don't have a problem doing, you know, out on the property, taking measurements with the contractor, going back out myself, going over the code. And you can ask, you know, Ms. Byford here, that I spent a lot of time trying to investigate the placement of this shed and any other place on the property where it would, you know, we wouldn't have to be here for this. And it's just, we would have to be here for a variance, no matter where it went on the property. You know, and I've been out there from my perspective, not that it matters. I mean, the enforcement officer enforced the code, but from my perspective, from a practical standpoint, even aesthetically, the standpoint, I mean, to me, you know, not that it matters, but if, you know, you want to hear that, where it is makes the most sense to me in several, you know, aspects.
I have, well, I have two questions. But first, looking for the future, and this is for anyone who owns the property in the future, be it Ms. Byford or anyone else, because the front of the house faces Henry Dubois, is there any chance a driveway can ever be built from Henry Dubois to?
No.
No, and that's...
No, it's too, it's too much of a, I mean, it'll cost a fortune and it's all shale.
It's a pit. It's a, it's a really steep pit.
I know. I need, I need to ask in case anyone ever brought that...
Yes, that's a good point.
Brought that in the future because then, it being the front of the house, if they ever had...
No, if they ever got a driveway, there'd be no reason to put a drive. I mean, it's really too short, too.
And that's, that's a very good point.
Too short, too steep.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because I'm trying to cover all bases, you know, as we, as we go along. My second question was, is, you know, going back to what Katie had mentioned with trying to make sure that everything's taken into consideration, is there any other method besides having a shed that, you know, you could think of where you could gather all this?
The only thing that I can, well, honestly, no. I mean, what I was going to say is I could keep all my kids' bikes and whatnot down in my basement and, you know, have them or me truck it up every time they want to play with stuff. But there's also a lawnmower and so, I mean, I don't know.
I can't think of anything off the top of my head, and that's why I was asking everyone if there could be any other, any, anything else besides the shed that could be useful. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we grant a variance.
Well, we still have a public hearing, right?
We don't need, why do we have to have a public hearing on this?
Yes.
Yeah.
You do?
We have to have a hearing on everything.
All right. Then I make a motion we table this to...
No, that we have a, that we have a public hearing is what you want to move.
Okay. I make a motion that we have a public hearing on this the next...
February 11th?
February. The problem is I'm going to be here.
Okay, I'll second that motion. I need you here.
Well, I'm going to be, I think. Use a calendar.
I seconded the motion.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The neighbors also have no response.
Yes. Buy, yeah.
Thank you.
Rosie, is there a way to get it all on the website?
Is that, I don't know.
Me, Amy can go for you.
Oh, I can ask you.
Yes, put the here and there stuff.
Oh, on the website, in the paper? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's that?
Thank you.
Oh, please, do we have the best method of contacting you online? Do you know, your cellphone? Calling, calling, he says...
No, no, it's no problem. I know. We requested it, so.
Are you here?
We have one more item.
I wasn't, but if you'd, if you'd like me to stay, I can certainly stay. Sure. No problem.
Yeah, I, I would definitely...
Sure. All right, no problem. Yeah.
Are you familiar with the property? Your, wait.
I'm not, no.
So is the map attached to the...
A light understanding of what's going on here. It's my understanding that there's, sure, have a good night. That this subdivision was a prior approved site, you know, went through site plan review and was, was approved prior. Is that the case? I mean, that was my understanding of, and then there was a...
Are we talking about 10 Taylor Street?
Yes.
Can Ms. Toder give you a presentation of the situation?
Basically, Richie wants to go from a 50-foot right to a 25-foot right.
Return to, get variance at 312.
And that wasn't something, I mean, was there a change in the law of why that wasn't done prior, you know, prior when the site was through site plan approval initially? Why that?
No, Stacy, not Stacy, Kathy, when she was here told me that it was, just because it was a concern that they didn't want to have multifamily houses there. So that's why they changed zoning. They didn't really, the tension was just something fell out the date. There were lots of...
The zoning has changed since, you know, since, since site plan approval, after the subplan approval, prior to the structure being built.
Prior to the infrastructure being installed.
I see. Okay.
I have a question for building inspector. On, on this plan, the street is approximately 30 feet wide.
I'm sorry.
But this fire lane or whatever, yeah, fire lane is 50 feet wide.
That's not, that's a right-of-way.
Well, okay, the right-of-way is 50 feet. What next in the building is, why does the right-of-way have to be wider than the road?
I'm the representative owner.
I'm the raised architect.
Okay.
Which page were you looking at?
This one, architects.
Who is the owner?
I'm the representative owner.
Right. Who is the owner?
Albin Creek Corporation.
And who is that? They're in a soapbox. It's a post office box.
Yeah, this is me. I'm the notified person.
Do we have a name for them? Who?
It's a, it's a group of people.
Right.
Name? No. It's usually corporations, not people's names.
It's a corporation. So it's a corporation.
Corporations are horrible.
Yeah, they're people.
And you are the...
My name is Anthony Abbey.
Anthony A...
A E.
This is scale drawing here. This is 30 feet wide. Street's 30 feet wide.
And you're the owner's rep?
And the right-of-way is 50 feet wide.
So are you part of this corporation?
The right-of-way has to be wider than the road.
Hold on a second. The road, the road, the road right-of-way is also 50 feet wide. Right-of-way for all town roads and things, that's the standard. They're always a 50-foot area. It's just that nobody ever paves a road 50 feet wide because utilities have to go in there, infrastructure.
If this is a scale drawing, this road's only 30 feet wide.
Yes. But the right-of-way is not shown on that.
Oh, you mean, so the right-of-way also...
Yeah, the right-of-way is shown, like, the right-of-way was just shown there because, yeah. Sorry. Okay, what was it, sorry?
What was I saying?
Yes, I do have those drawings and enough to do that.
The owner of the brick is Albin Creek.
Oh, that dotted line outside showing you the right-of-way all the way around. That's 50 feet.
Right, property line to property line.
So who is the applicant? What is this name here? I cannot read it.
David Toder.
That's me.
Oh, okay. So the app, you are the architect?
Correct.
Okay. This is behind town hall.
That's behind the community center and town hall, yep.
Okay. I went out looking for it and I didn't see that, unfortunately, I didn't have the map with me and the lot was not marked or numbered, so I just guessed that's what it was.
I mean, the lot number fell out of the tree.
Okay. Well, anyhow.
Lot number 23 or 24?
No.
It's 38 lot number.
It's lot number 38.
And...
So the front of the lot is on Taylor Street?
Yes.
So you would have the house facing this round cul-de-sac or what direction would the house be facing?
The house is actually facing south. You see, I'm built, I build zero-energy houses, so the one thing is I have to worry that the house roof line, so it's always facing a south.
So you would have the house facing lot 40?
Uh, no, 37.
You would have the house facing lot 37. So on this map, we have two little squares.
One's a garage.
Okay, one is a garage and one is a house.
Where the bereithway connecting them.
So all of the other houses in this area, are these houses that you built? Are they part of this development? That's all empty. Isn't Taylor Street unbuilt?
Yes.
No, but there were all these other houses. Right. That's the only stuff that's built. And this house is going to be built soon?
Yes.
All by itself, over here?
Yes.
Oh, interesting. And...
Did you own the property before it was rezoned?
No.
No. You bought it after the rezoning?
Yes.
You bought it after?
The owner of the development.
No, I'm actually the fourth.
Or you're fourth.
Or fifth.
I think it started with Richie Stephens back in the 70s.
Wait, you said you're not the owner.
Locks is, he's the fourth owner.
What else?
Well, we're just, we're...
He's the owner. He said he's the owner's rep. He's not the owner.
He, he's using the word owner loosely. Pardon me.
He's the empowered representative for the corporation that is the owner.
So the property was purchased after the rezoning? So when you, you knew what the requirements were when you bought the property?
Yes.
And is that where the architect comes in and we say, why can't you design a house that fits on the property without a variance?
It's 20 foot wide, you mean? A house that's 20 foot wide? They would, yes, well, one could, but it wouldn't match the neighborhood. It would not be very saleable because it would be cottagee, really small. not be very saleable, it would be cottagee, really small. So, there's, it, it, in many ways, it was, it became an unbuildable lot with the zoning change. There are also some other lots that also have, because of their shape, they, um, well, 25-foot additional, uh, you know, loss of buildable area.
Well, the main reason is also we're doing zero energy homes.
Wait, can you...
We're doing the zero energy homes. And the thing is, we, we have a restriction that's, to do that much higher than, most subdivisions are built just to plop a house any which way you want. You know, if there, I mean, if there was just a simple rule that everybody made it that all houses and lots have to be built so that you can orient houses facing south, we could probably save 30% of our energy, just that simple action alone. But I'm also have to make sure that I have my house not only facing south, so I'd have a roof also facing south, so I can put solar panels on the roof.
Right.
So, these other lots that show all of these rectangles, is that because under the current zoning, these are buildable lots?
Yes, that's the buildable area within each lot indicated by that dashed line.
Okay, so, are there any other lots you would then be coming back for a variance for?
Most likely, there are some other lots, there's one, for example, that was already granted, uh, here, because it's a triangular shaped lot, 22, on the, the main map, that one was granted a variance.
Wait, did I say that you did?
Sure.
Here, okay, so this is grandfathered, in effect?
Well, at this point, yes, it was approved by the, a, a previous ZBA.
So, it was 23?
Yes, 23, that's correct. So, both of those, again, because of the configuration and shape of the particular lots...
Right.
Those required variances, and also because we have the south-facing restriction.
So, these already were given variance?
That's right.
Okay, and that was while you guys owned it or before?
Yes, no.
That's right, that's in recent years, 2009.
Have you noticed all the houses you see are facing the same way? Regardless of how the road is, you know, most builders build a house facing the road?
Right.
Well, this is since it's, you have to take, deal with the situation it was given, we have to...
So, which are the properties that you would require additional variances for?
Um, probably 41, 42, down on the bottom would probably require it.
It might, but, uh, I think it was one of these 36, I think, because of where the creek is, that also made, or maybe it was, uh, lot 35 with the drainage system...
Right.
That also really cut into the buildable area. So, there are a couple more that might require or that we might come back to ask for, um, because effectively that rezoning made it very difficult to build.
And to the previous owner that had the rezoning, before they, they had a bankruptcy problem or fight between owners, they were actually gonna start bringing, proceeding to get the town on this whole issue, but they wanted, the idea, they agreed fine, we don't wanna bother with multifamily, the zoning change is fine, but don't change the lots, 'cause in this case here, this lot that we're looking at right now, they almost basically made it non-conforming. And that was one of the issues, they wanted to try and, you know, fight the town down, "Okay, fine, you could make, keep it so we can't do multifamilies, but you can't make the lots, so you can't build one anymore," 'cause they're village lots.
But this was previous to you?
Yes.
So, you bought it with full knowledge of it?
Yeah, I mean, if, that they already were, put the paperwork together with a legal team, but they never acted on it.
So, then, let me ask this question, were we to grant a variance for this, what would be, um, why, why would we not be setting a precedent that said, "Okay, yeah, and therefore we'll also be granting future variances"?
Well, it would be, as done previously, where a reasonable request was made, it was granted. Uh, we're not asking for variances on all the lots, uh, we can, you know, configure the houses pretty tight on some of them, but on some of them, it's, well, sufficiently difficult to make a reasonable house that we're...
Make it south-facing.
And make it...
And south-facing, that's true.
Well, I, I understand that I'm very, you know, I applaud the kind of construction that you wanna make, but, um, I'm concerned about this, this kind of, um, you know, this isn't a one-off decision, is what's making me uncomfortable.
It's not the only lot that's gonna have a problem.
Now, well, the previous planning boards were, they were happy to have us just come back and just do it individually for each one, they knew that we're gonna have to come back like probably four more, five more times.
So, were you involved in it?
Yes.
In the, so you, when they changed the zoning?
Oh, no, that was happened, I think, in, um, if you go look on the board and town thing, they drew it in black magic markers, so it's actually never on in the map.
So, I just, I just am trying to be clear about this.
Is there a black magic marker around this particular, just a particular thing?
So, these, these two variances were granted before you bought the property?
No.
After.
No, to us.
To us, by which ZBA, by us?
Yours.
Us. I was on the ZBA that we granted, I think Carl and I are the only ones that are here.
How long ago was that date?
09 or 10.
Oh, okay. Three or four years back, yeah.
That's right.
Well, I remember, you know, going out there, looking at it, talking to them.
Right, for example, these both, because they, they face in a way diagonally to the road, they don't have the presence of, you know, a wall of house only 25 foot off the property line, you know, we were, we were just getting a corner, um, again, because of the configuration requirements.
You know, it's real hard for people that don't know the area to understand the photography of this place, and it would be really, I was thinking, really hard to have photographs maybe of the slope of the land. And I remember, I went out and I looked, there was no snow in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was not, there was not any snow when I was in that area. I do, I do.
Yeah, I think we're all familiar with the area, we've all been up there.
Okay, do it.
No, right.
How do you see this request for a variance affecting the community center?
Not at all.
Not at all, because they're that way, so we, we were able to build right up to that 20-foot line if we wanted to.
Community center also faces away from...
And that's the back of their center, I don't know if they have a window on that side.
They do have some, but it's, it's going to be, what, 50, 60 feet away, maybe more. And actually, that's only a deck that's that close.
Turn it is, yeah.
Were you talking about lot 4?
But, yeah, he wants it this way because of the solar panels.
To the west or to the left of Ten Taylor Street, it's, they won't be that close, but it, it basically faces, the, the, um, the variance requested, it's towards a fire lane and a, um, you know, turnaround, so in a way, that's a pretty friendly space for a house to be a little closer to the road, because there isn't a direct neighbor right there, there isn't a, a through street, um, it's really mostly used for walking. Uh, and then Anthony's the owner of 37 and 36 across the, the way, so in terms of, you know, affected neighbors, it's him or...
But there, there aren't houses there?
There are no houses there yet, it's just...
So, those would be, what's that?
That's a good question.
They, they will be, hopefully, at some point, uh, but then again, it'll be existing.
The carriage distance would be quite, it would be a hundred feet in the time, something feet.
I don't think he can, that's, that's the community center. See, I, I'm not understanding this map at all, because it looks like, it looks like you have this plotted and this is, oh, you're saying the 50-foot setback goes all the way back here?
Right, that's where it would be, right through the middle of the structure, yeah.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
This is a little less of a variance requested than was on the original submission.
Okay. What is between the end of this cul-de-sac of Taylor Street and the Town of New Paltz Community Center, is this a place where people walk?
Yeah, it's paved and has a chain across it most of the time, they had it removed last time, I was there for snow removal purposes. But there's typically, it's a, it's a fire lane, it's emergency access, uh, and it's...
I had to install a chain across it.
Yeah, so typically it has a chain across, people will walk across or, or bike or whatever, 'cause you can go around the chain. So, it's pedestrian access only.
So, with this revision, you're asking for 18 feet?
That's right. I don't know if everyone got a copy, uh, David Cockwell was trying to...
See, we changed it from the one you have, we, we didn't ask for the full 25, we asked...
Basically, the, the garage and the street, 'cause of the view here. Yeah, um, rotated straight, the idea of having it rotated was to give it a little more curb appeal, but the seven feet can be saved by having it just straight, more casual, um, the, the garage to the, the house.
Oh, yeah.
The elevations would look very similar.
Do you see any problems with this access road?
That's what I'm trying to figure out, what it, what it is.
It goes right into town?
It's a fire lane that had to be installed later on, um...
Who owns this? Who owns here?
The fire lane? I don't know who took over ownership, but I had the dedication of the road near the village on the...
Right, it's on the road, yeah, the village.
Yeah, but the town is plowing.
But the town's plowing, okay, but that's a bit of a town.
But it's, yeah, I don't know, the village and town fight, go fight over it, I don't care.
We've had a big problem at Woodland Pond for a long time, I think, yeah.
No, this is not at all the same thing, this was, because there's only one entrance into the whole, the whole development of Bontecue, that whole area there has only one entrance in. So, when this subdivision was finally planned, they needed an emergency route, so this is a fire lane, so let's say a car crash is somewhere in Bontecue and damages and there's a fire up the road or there's some damage, and people need to get in and out of the development for emergency reasons, this is an emergency access only, that's why I had to install a chain across it.
Okay, and you're sure that all of the planning records reflect the fact that that is not to be used as an access?
That's why I put a chain across it.
Yeah.
Well, we need documentation.
But, but in a way...
No, it's in the, it's in the file map.
To do a comparative and account. There's, there's no temptation to not go the normal path on Bontecue View, like this isn't a shorter, easier path.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And there, there are three ways out of the, of Anthony's part of that development on, toward Bontecue.
With all due respect, this is a, a much shorter route off of 32. If I'm living...
No, it's got a chain across it.
I understand, but that's why, um, because we've had another issue in the community that is a town-village right-of-way access road, whatever you wanna call it, it's been a, a serious problem. And the fact of the matter is that this would be, I think, an extremely tempting way for people, I mean, you just turn in by town hall and go a little farther than your own house.
I know.
You're not going through the circuitous Bontecue.
Yeah, but how can you get to their house? There's a chain across it.
Yeah, and it is now, but before you chained it, there were people using it.
Yeah, I know there were people using, but that was only 'cause I didn't get around to, I didn't get around to putting the chain on.
Right.
But I had to do that before the, the village accepted the road and took the road over, the chain had to be installed, yeah.
This is, this is a different situation.
Yes.
In, in Woodland Ponds, you've got a development, you've got people there, here is the Town Hall and the Community Center.
Well...
It isn't, you know, it's not the same deal.
Also, this development and proposed development is all within the village, is that true?
This is not proposed, this is a fully approved...
So, our issue at Woodland Pond was that it was the town and the village had to get that?
Well, there, there was a bigger issue there, 'cause I'm familiar with it, because the engineers always talk a story, 'cause I did another road in the town just recently. That was, that road just got finally dedicated, it did get dedicated, after nine years of problems, so that road was not owned by the village or the town, that road was in the limbo land. And so, that was an access in there that they, somebody basically purchased from the developer to actually get that access in, there's another entrance in and out of Woodland Ponds. And that was all something that they had to figure, then, you know, that's, it was not like that? Well, that's what Andy was telling me.
Wasn't like that at all.
'Cause Andy said that was not, that was, on, the road was only dedicated like three or four months ago.
The site plan approval required a secondary road?
Yes, since, since a one.
And then the owner, the development sold that access to...
In that interim, the whole lent development was developed, but the developer knew and agreed...
Well, no, he, he sold that access.
Wait, excuse me, would you let one person talk at a time, please?
It was the neighbors who then built houses that wanted that road closed off, but the site plan approval, which is in the village, okay, that was another jurisdiction battle because the new houses were in the town, but all of Woodland Pond is in the village, and to get that village approval, they had to have a secondary road and that was it. So, in many ways, that was a false fight. If people had gone back and looked at the site plan and how it was approved, they would have known the answer and that would have been the end of it.
Well, they also dedicated the road nine years ago. But, I mean, in this case here...
You know about reinventing wheels, don't you?
But this one, this case right here, though, this is something that was all taken care of, it's all, the villages took care of it completely legally, town does not want people accessing that, they're only allowed to have for, for...
Who owns the property behind the community center?
Behind the community center is this property.
Yes.
You do.
Yeah, this is the...
Other than the road itself.
Other than the road itself.
Access.
He owns that whole massive thing, so, you know, as the community grows and just because you're in the village now and that happens to be town property, doesn't mean you can't curve Taylor Road and, because I can see a right-of-way here on the map to develop the rest of the property, so, I mean...
No, what do you mean? There's nothing to be developed anymore?
It's not gonna be developed anymore.
No, there's nothing, there's nothing left to be developed.
I think all the lots are laid out, is what he's saying.
But that...
These are condos, this is the community center right here and then here's the village hall. This is those ugly apartments. The condos, condos, this is, um...
Village arms?
Can't be, they're, village arms are much further...
Village arms are, you see those four, those two rectangles?
Uh, I thought this was here.
These two rectangles are village arms.
These, these rectangles here are village arms.
Yeah, these are all village arms right here.
Yeah, no, I'm...
That's right, but it's previous to...
These are, these are village arms.
That's right, they're houses on all those lots, these were the last 25.
This is what I'm asking.
And these also are...
That's right, all those ones, um...
Is this your answer?
That's correct.
This is village arms here.
Village arms is way over to the left of Town Hall. This is Town Hall, village arms.
No, I swear to God, you, these are village arms. I planted, I planted a billion trees along this line here.
I, I believe that's true, Sally.
So, he's going this way?
Yeah, this is how it looks, this is the community center right here.
Right.
The town hall's over here, and 32 is right here.
Okay, this is 32, all right, so I...
Village arms is off of 32.
No, I see where he is.
Okay, I'd like to ask my questions.
These are not built yet, right?
No, these are not built yet. This is built, everything that you see blank is built.
Everything that...
Everything that you see, nothing on these are all built.
Those are built?
Yes, these are built back in the 70s.
So, this is your lot. Aren't you going to have the same problem here, and here, and here? Is there 50 feet from here to here?
Yes.
And 50 feet from here to here?
Yeah, all these are drawn as conforming spots.
Except this one.
This is drawn as conforming also, that first dotted line.
But you're, you want to turn it around, is that...
No, I'm just increasing that line that way.
So he already said that he'll be back for probably four or five more variance requests.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
That's what I think.
And they already had gained two. Right. These two were granted.
They've already got two variances from this board?
Yes, not from us, but...
Well, apparently Carl and David were.
Carl and David were on the board when those were granted.
Oh.
Yeah. So what you're asking us to do is to set a precedent for a number of lots in the future. Continue the precedent.
That was my point.
The precedence, okay.
No, Carl said, Carl said it at another meeting, because I asked him about setting a precedent. He says, no, we can, you know, we can...
No, we certainly can, but just...
We can accept one, we can deny another one.
Okay, let me go through my questions. So, I don't know that we can really figure out if this is going to produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, since it's not really all that built up. It does kind of concern me that it's zoned one way, and why you bought property when you knew what the zoning was. Can the benefit be sought by some other method that would not require a variance? What have you actually looked at that would not require a variance?
It's not possible. Basically, the changing of zone, the change, okay, A, actually, we did not actually know the zoning was until actually, after the closing. When I went to the village hall, there's a magic marker drawing on it. All your other zoning maps are printed up. This one's still a magic marker drawing. Somebody took a Sharpie and just drew around this, just this little piece here. Even the old parts not.
I'm sure you have a lawyer who would have looked into this.
What? No, it was, we found out after the fact, but then we did, that's how I know that the legal papers are together, because I went back to the place. Now, I mean, the only other process that there is left for me to do is I can go have a bunch of lawyers and then try and sue the village. I don't want to go that route, because they created basically non-conforming lots that were already proved. So what the village did here, their intent was just to limit the amount of development. They wanted to limit that there wouldn't be multifamily houses, because there's only one entrance coming in here. That's the reason why it's a fire lane. They need to give an emergency access in and out for the community. Because they made, this is something that they made a mistake way off in the bat, so they were trying to cover their tracks and make the mistake. And I don't think the intent was, and that's what Stacy was telling me, with their, not Stacy, Kathy, their intent was never when they changed the zoning was to try and make it so the lots were non-conforming. They just wanted to limit it so we wouldn't have two, three family houses built on these lots.
Okay. We have certain mandates from the state that we need to consider, and I would like you to just play along with me and consider the answers to these questions. There is a place for tribal knowledge, and I appreciate you sharing that. But right now, I want to try and understand this in terms of the questions that New York State tells us we are to consider.
Okay.
So I'm asking you, what other methods could you have used? What other options did you explore for this, and why was it not feasible? That is something we have to ask you about.
The lot was like 20 feet wide.
The buildable area is just over 20 foot wide.
And then if you tried to skew it so it's facing south, you couldn't make a house wider than 15 feet? Who wants to live in it? That's the trailer. I could put a trailer on there.
Or a railroad apartment in the city. I mean, it's kind of a not, it's not, it's not a...
A mobile home or...
The community character question, which is relevant to that one, that's one of the, in a way, that's part of what says this is the best method of addressing the situation, is to allow us a little more room to build a reasonable house so that it will fit in character with the community and the neighborhood.
And we're also trying to do something good for the community by doing zero-energy homes. It's just, I mean, I don't see where resistance is coming from. I mean, if more builders should be doing what I'm doing. And if anything, I find I should have encouragement instead of resistance.
Listen, but that's...
I mean, I could put, I could put a trailer on here. Yes, I'd say, my option is I could put a mobile home on here.
Okay.
You want a mobile home in the village, we could do that.
Question also about the size of the house.
Does everybody understand what 20 feet is? Oh, wait.
How many bedrooms would there be in, in the house if you were to get a variance and build what you have planned?
Just, what, three bedrooms?
It's a three-bedroom house, right?
Three bedroom.
Okay.
Have you already brought this up to the planning board? And is that why, and you referred to us?
No, no, the planning board said this is not an issue.
That's right, that's right. We, we asked that very...
We asked the planning board, they said zoning, it's a zoning issue.
Uh huh, okay.
Does everybody understand what 20 feet is? Anybody know how wide this room is? Want to take a guess?
Twice before.
It's 22 feet wide. So that means a 20-foot house would be two feet less than the width of this room. Be like a place down in Brooklyn.
A railroad?
Yeah, but we'd also have to skew it, though, so we don't have 20 feet. We might have 15.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you know, that's what 20 feet is. And then to turn it so that it's facing the proper way to, um, to do the solar panels,
So this...
This one. Here you are.
Well, considering where I live, that sounds, that seems pretty grand. And where I did live, that seems pretty grand. I have no, no problem about small houses. I think they're wonderful.
Carl, I was just wondering, the variances that were already granted for this lot, were they in relation to the zoning? Or, if you can remember, the two variances that had already been granted?
They were front yard setback, variances similar to this one.
Similar to this one.
More, there we asked for 20, there we did 25 feet.
Okay. And I'm just trying to get an idea of the decisions that were in, that were made, like, you know, to get those variances, if they would apply, or if anything would apply for this as well?
Most of the 25 lots don't need a variance. And to some extent, the reason these 25 weren't built out earlier by previous owners is because they were tougher lots, especially once the zoning change was made. So several of them would have required coming through, you know, an approval process, and so previous developers said, well, I'm just not going to deal with that. So we're, we're kind of, bottom of the barrel is the wrong phrase, but, you know, we're dealing with some of the tougher sites.
Right, and you knew, like, you knew that this was going to be part of the process when you...
When we started those zero-energy, we knew it was going to be a problem.
Okay.
I mean, other than this lot, all the other lots are easy to build on.
No, I'm sorry. I was saying, not when you decide to build zero energy, when you decide to purchase the, purchase the property, you knew that you'd have to go through this process?
Yes, we knew we were going to have to go through some, well, not till actually after the closing, when we found out that the zoning was the magic marker gate. It wasn't, the sellers didn't disclose that.
Okay.
Were you going to go through the rest of your questions?
I would like, yeah, well, Sally?
Did I understand correctly that in this particular development, these gentlemen have come twice before to this board asking for the same thing? And has been granted?
Yes.
Twice. Why didn't you recommend a zoning change?
Hmm, that's a good question.
To zone it back the way it was?
Well, if I do remember, you guys, we did talk about it. And we figured that we were talking about maybe five at most.
There was still a question that they did have?
No, that's all right.
So you forgot to ask for it.
Well, you guys were thinking it was only five, so you figured you'd just have to do it five times instead of changing the zoning. Either, because the whole idea was to change the zoning back to the other zoning. The original intent was still, which I agreed with, was not to increase the density, the population density.
Right, and R2 allows for multifamily or...
The question then becomes, you're not requesting a 25-foot variance to the front for a zero-energy house. You're requesting it because you've had it twice before.
No, he's modified it, though, so he's asking for 18 feet.
For all of them or just for this one?
This one.
We're not asking for variances on any of the properties tonight. I'd rather you just consider the one as a standalone.
You have one before this board right now, asking for a 25-foot variance on the front, because the zoning was changed and requires a 50-yard setback. That's what you're requesting?
Right.
Not 18 feet. Now, my question to you is, since you've already just said you've been here twice before for the exact same thing, and you did not build zero net houses?
Yes, I did. They're all zero-energy houses.
First in the country. This is the first zero-energy development, well, of...
So both requests prior to this were for the same idea?
Yes, and we followed through on what we said we'd do.
That's right.
Yeah.
How many more times do you think you're coming back?
We figured, we figured we're going to need about a total of five on here. You know, it was five or six, we said, we had back in the beginning. That's why we didn't request a zoning change. We figured we're just going to deal on issue by issue.
And some of that's not certain. It's hard for us to say exactly how many times we'll come back, because we're doing it to some extent one at a time. Those others were also sought individually. The lot 22 and 23 that were previously approved, they were sought as one-offs. They, we understand they have to stand on their own merits individually.
Wouldn't they be better off asking for a zoning change?
Isn't that harder? You know, I don't know, that's probably more a question for legal counsel, I would say.
Unless they change the zoning back to what it was, they got to come to us each time.
Right, unless you made a totally different zoning, you didn't get a spot zoning type of thing.
On something that isn't proposed.
Do you have an opinion on this spot zoning rezon?
Also, it seems to me that...
I haven't been out to figure property. I've been out to another house that just received a CO that was finished. And so I've been in the neighborhood. But I haven't been specifically to that property. No, I mean, other, I mean, I...
If they rezoned it back...
You know, an opinion, I don't know, I understand the setback requirement in the zone. And, you know, they're asking for, you know, essentially, an 18-foot, it looks like, variance from that, you know, because they can't get that 50 feet, they're getting 32. I mean, I can't say I have an opinion either way, really. You know, I just enforce the zoning what it is, you know. So I don't necessarily, I think that's really a question for you all, as far as your...
These other houses that would also require variances, what kind of, what size variance would they need?
Les, I think this is the last one that we're, we need 18 to 25 foot variance.
There's 41 to 42 are difficult.
So that also, so it's...
You're right, but again, it might be a far more modest variance requested on future ones. Most of them would be more like a five-foot front yard variance, as opposed to something. This is, I think this is the last one that needs something fairly substantial. And I acknowledge this is fairly substantial, but hopefully, because of its location on that fire lane and the cul-de-sac, it's actually the one with the least impact on any neighborhood properties or the neighborhood in any way.
These are showing the back setback as, for code?
The whole, no, that's the whole thing for code. That whole thing is current zoning. It's got a 50-foot front.
This has a 50-foot front?
Yep. 20-foot back. 25-foot back. 25-foot back, 25-foot side.
Yeah, they all show that, that's what those dashed lines show in the buildable area. And you can see that some of them, with lot 35, it might be deep enough, depending on the house configuration, but it's got some challenges. There's a drainage easement there, and then lot 23 has the creek setback as well. So some of those are a little tighter, but neither of those is as bad in a way, or is strongly affected by the R1 zoning as lot 38. That's the last one that is...
And I tend to disagree. Because these two, we went for 25. Well, no, I want to be honest with them. I don't want to come back later and say, well, last time you said this.
Well, but we, remember, we designed out lot 35, and it needed, I think we were asked for 12-foot on lot 35, so that's not as much as 18 to 25 that we were requesting. But that was also client-driven, and maybe we can drop, you know...
But these two, these two were dramatic. The ones that we did the last two times, those were both, we had to go back to the 25.
And the others were skewed because of the south requirement. That was the reason those were needed so much. But also, lot 22 is just a weird triangle. If you can imagine, if it was 25 foot less, it was a very, very small triangle indeed.
And how about 45? That looks kind of small to me.
It is small.
Yeah, but it's, it's, um...
Well, will you be that?
It's kind of south-facing.
Yeah, it's kind of south-facing.
Yeah.
How is the access to it?
The flag, that's also, that's one of the other flag lots. 29 is also a flag.
Yeah, well, let's, let's deal with, let's deal with this, yeah, I'm not going to rest on it. It's going to have to come back, variances, unless we request that they change the zoning back.
And I have a question about the zoning, because I just want to make sure I'm clear about, is that it was originally set in place to discourage multifamily houses? Is that correct?
Yeah, for density reasons.
It was in R2 when it was first subdivided, R2 zoning, and then it was changed to R1 zoning, and apparently, that was in order to make it so it couldn't be two-family housing in there. But it also, I mean, part of what it did is it shrank the buildable area.
Right.
I think it was acknowledged at the time that some of those lots are made very challenging, and that they can seek variances, and that would be the remedy. So we're seeking.
Right, and the, right, and the houses that you're building are not multifamily houses?
No, they can't be.
Right, right, they're single.
Yeah, and that's why Stacy, I think, at the time, was advising that we should just, I mean, Kathy, keep me, yeah. Kathy was at the point, because she said that was the intent, she said to come back for variances for each lot, you know, because of the problem.
Right.
But that was the only way. You didn't, you don't have an R, you don't have an R1 code that has 25-foot setbacks. So...
And that's, and that's one, I think, piece that needs to be clear, that the original intent of the rezoning, if it was meant for to discourage multifamily housing, to bring it back, that would still open up the doors, and at least with great variances, you can...
In other words, we're better off having them come to us for variance when they need it. You know, what we considered last time, I remember, was because they're doing net zero, which is a pretty important thing today.
Yeah, it's really big, too.
It was good to give the variance.
Yeah.
And I don't, to me, that hasn't changed. I mean, when you've got a net zero house, you're saving on the environment.
And I won't, because we have a full, full house tonight, I won't be voting, but...
Well, we can't vote tonight, anyway, it's not a voting ceremony.
Oh, that's true, it's, okay, but I still want to say that.
Why can't we vote?
We had a public hearing last time.
Was not announced as a public hearing?
No, there were no public hearings the last two times.
Well, there's nobody that lives next door to it. There's nobody that lives next door to this...
You still have to have a public hearing.
You still have a public hearing.
That's what the ZBA is about.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, you got to do that.
There are people, but they're both are driving on those roads, they're, because it's the one-access road.
And there are other people who may own lots there. You don't own all these lots.
It's different, the town and the Village Arms.
Well, Village Arms. I mean, you know...
But the owner of the Village Arms is never going to come out here.
Well, there are people who live at Village Arms, you know.
Condominium, so, well, the people who live in Village Arms.
Are they not rented?
Well, we also can't assume that they haven't come out in the past, they won't come out in the future.
No, I think it's, I thought they're rented.
They still have rights.
The owner has the rights.
They are, the property neighbors have rights.
A public hearing, anyone can...
You know, they haven't got to send letters to everybody in a condominium, I hope.
Also, when I was speaking to Victoria, the attorney for the ZBA, she reviewed the case and said that since the application is within 500 feet of town property, it has to be before the Ulster County Planning Board, and then, which we will get you on the agenda for hopefully for the first meeting in February. And then, we do have to have a public hearing, which we will have in February.
So then, who belongs? Who, so, as he, he's saying, so everybody in the whole Village Arms has to get a letter?
Maybe.
Well, when we go in, we use a GIS website to generate the addresses, and we just put in 200 feet per village, and then 500 feet per town. So depending on what addresses we get, then we'll give that list to you. But it also goes in the New Paltz Times, and it will also go on the website. So it is open, open to the public. There's a lot of issues that aren't only attended by neighbors, but just by concerned citizens. So the public hearing will hopefully be February 14.
So we'll make a motion about a special public hearing next?
Once we hear back from the Ulster County Planning Board. Once we hear back from the Ulster County Planning Board.
February 14th is a Friday.
February 11th, sorry. We have to hear back from the Ulster County.
Do I have to wait till they hear back from the Ulster County, how do we deal with this now?
Procedurally.
Well, just one step at a time. Here, dependent on if it gets on the agenda for the Ulster County Planning Board, I guess.
Okay, there, she just made the motion.
Oh, no, I can't, I can't.
I know you didn't make it, but that's the motion I want to make.
Yeah, wait, I, I actually have, okay, I'm not ready to.
We can discuss it after somebody seconds it.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
What are we discussing if we discuss, what is it?
I have a couple more questions.
Doesn't, doesn't the discussion have to be pertinent to the motion?
Yes, yes, but it can be discussed after the motion is accepted.
No.
They have the hearing and make a decision before the county planning board or not. Couldn't they do it simultaneously?
The motion, the motion is to refer to the Ulster County Planning. Is there a second to that motion?
Uh, we don't need to make a motion, that's just normal. Am I correct, because of the occasion?
But we have to deal with this some way. If this is a practical way of dealing.
I see.
And I, I will second the motion. Okay. Now, we're ready for discussion.
Do we have to discuss on the motion?
Yeah.
Well, that's not what we want to discuss.
That's not what I wanted, I had some other questions.
Questions concerning what?
Um, not the motion, but the application and a request I wanted to make.
You can still say your hearing, and you can still ask your questions.
Is there discussion on this motion? Are you ready to vote? All in favor of the motion, say aye. 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 Opposed, negative sign? The motion carries. Okay, now.
Okay, I would like, if possible, could somebody unearth the minutes of the meeting where the zoning change was made? I would like to read what the rationale was behind the zoning change. I have no idea.
For year.
That the zoning, year?
Yeah.
The minutes for.
I think go back to 2003, at least. 2002.
I have trouble finding minutes for 2012.
We're looking at zoning code, and it should show the date of the amendment to that district.
The zoning code should show that.
Do you want me to send that out to everybody, once we, I can scan it and, okay?
I would, yeah, I would like a copy of that.
Yeah, I would like to just.
Important to see the rationale behind the zoning.
You have a zoning code.
I'll just say the minutes.
The minutes.
I want to go.
It's right on the drawing.
The email?
Yeah, my email's on the drawing.
Well, it doesn't matter what the minutes say, gang. The zoning code is the zoning code.
Yes.
And it doesn't matter.
No, they want to know why.
No, actually, but for the assumption of saying why it was created, if it was created with the purpose of making, of discouraging multifamily houses or not, to know more about that zoning, but.
I don't think that's relevant to the issue at hand.
But it is what it is.
The issue, they are asking for a variance on the zoning code as it exists now. It does not matter, except for your own intellectual curiosity.
Well, I would say that if you're going to, if you're going to grant a variance that negates that decision for the zoning, you want to know why.
Yeah, Sally, the variance request reads as follows. 25-foot yard setback instead of 50 per n, reestablishing original R2 front yard setback because re-zoning to R1 made lot unbuildable to community standards.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but this board historically has already done it twice.
I understand. I want to look at it, I want to understand it. I'm not taking any position, I'm gathering information. I'm interested in the issue of the adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. I'm not saying there are any, I'm just interested in that issue being addressed in the rationale. I see that there is a tributary 13 going through not too far away from there. I don't know what happens, you know, I don't know how wet it is there. The lot was not clearly marked. I mean, it was hard to know that was lot 38 or 10 Taylor Street, I mean, there was nothing out there, it's just all there. And I don't know where things start and end. Are there any environmental, I mean, what is the, how wet is this?
That lot is a little above Taylor Street. It should have, I mean, it's a building lot. We're not doing anything special in that way. There's drainage at the street between lot 38 and the stream, which goes into a retention pond that's brewed by the village. So it should, and, and so, in answer to the specific question, it should have no adverse environmental impact, and in fact, you know, because it'll be zero net energy compared with other, it'll have less.
Okay.
Let me ask the building inspector this. For this subdivision to be approved by the county, which I'm assuming it had to be approved by the county, am I correct?
Has it gone to county?
No, it hasn't gone to county.
No, I mean, this whole subdivision.
The rule might have been different, I suppose.
Well, didn't the county have to approve this subdivision?
The village planning board did.
Well, yeah, and then I think the county.
It's filed with the county.
Whatever. Didn't they have to go through a whole environment?
Yes.
Study?
Oh, yeah, the planning board had to secrete and all that other stuff.
All right, that's, that answers the question.
Yeah, all environmental information's all the planning board, that's not going to be in a zoning board meeting or anything.
No, no.
No, that's at the planning board.
That's the function that's approved. Oh, I also would like to know now, they have submitted a revised plan which asks for an 18-foot setback instead of the 25-foot setback, which is a little more reasonable. How do they go about amending this plan?
They have to fill out a new application.
But not pay another fee?
No, they have to amend their application.
Just amend the application, yeah. Let me ask you, is this, as you have it here, is this a subdivision as it was originally approved?
Yes.
Okay, so this.
But it was, it goes off of the page, and some of it was built out by previous owners to the up, you know, the top of the page.
But all of these were specified as buildable lots?
That's correct.
So 38 was defined as being a buildable lot in the original subdivision plan?
Yes, right, that's how it was subdivided, into a buildable.
Yeah, but against a lot, against a lot actually create a lot that's not buildable.
But that was before the zoning change, right?
Yeah, but I'm just, I'm just.
No, no, I understand.
You know, dot the i's and cross the t's.
I'm just staying with you.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just trying to understand, you know, the business of handing out variances is something we try to do responsibly, and we need to look at all the angles. You know, your job is to come and present your best case to us, and you've done a very good job of that, and our job is to, you know, look at all the sides that we can look at.
I had it, and then it was put away, and I wasn't, I don't, I had, I had it out, and then, yeah, I have to look at it, yeah.
Okay.
Unit, they're also counting up, Ulster County, ZBA, is that what it's called?
Uh, the Ulster County Planning Board, we're still waiting on a response. We submitted the proposal for it to be on the agenda on Monday, yesterday, and hopefully we'll hear back, and then hopefully it will be on the agenda for the first, I believe it's the first Tuesday or Wednesday of the month that the Ulster County Planning Board meets, and then we can schedule your public hearing for February 11, the same day as the previous application, the state's.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Do you know if we can amend the application right now?
Can they amend the application?
It sounds like it's more likely that if you're going to approve anything, it would be the 18-foot variance.
18-foot, 25-foot, yeah.
Entirely, you know, that's fine with us, so, you know, just kind of.
How do they amend?
What happened here is there was no application before us, they, they came right to the, in some ways, they came right to the, the ZBA. There was no pending application in front of the, you know, to the building department.
That's right, we weren't, we were on full plans, and it wasn't a point if you weren't going to grant it.
Yeah, so there was, I didn't have physically anything, whatever you have is what you have, so.
Oh.
I would say if they want to amend something, then I would, I would have, you know, maybe ask them what you want them to do to amend it, I mean, this, this one drawing, is this the, this is the newer one you're looking at?
Yeah.
I mean, is that acceptable enough to you for an amendment? I don't know, like I said, there's no application before us, so there were no materials that we received or reviewed.
Can everybody agree that they can amend this without going through a whole process? I mean, I don't see why they should have to go through a whole process. And to me, 18-foot variance is a lot better than a 25-foot.
No, I would agree with you on that. I'm also concerned that we didn't give the building inspector a chance.
Because they haven't applied for a building permit yet.
Wait, I didn't finish saying what I was going to say.
Sorry, I'm tired, it's getting late.
Okay.
Not too late for us to be polite.
Yes, I would, I, I, my understanding is we usually get a recommendation from the building inspector, we get a reaction from the building inspector, we get something in writing, and we haven't had it yet.
Right, right, because there's no application that came before our office, they, they came right to the zoning board initially.
I think that needs to happen.
We, we have a process that we ought to follow.
Yeah, right.
And that process involves first going to the building inspector.
That was my understanding, and, and that's why, you know, initially, I wasn't even aware that tonight I would, you know.
So they haven't paid a nesh bro.
Nothing's been done, really, in front of our office, other than the application, I think that Holly did the application for the, yeah, there was no application for.
If indeed you are looking at this for the first time, and we are, I suggest that we go back to the process, that we allow the building inspector to do whatever it is that the building inspector feels is necessary before our next meeting.
Well, you have a hearing, so you're going to need a written recommendation.
Yeah, I think the recommendation would be from our office, and from my understanding of the procedure, is that it would be, you know, a denial of, you know, you know, what, because of, you know, what, what we have here, and the setback requirement, that it would be a denial stating what variance they're seeking, pretty much, I, our office would be putting in writing what, what, what they've put in writing.
They already have an application, or, or, the, the application for 25.
For, for the variance application.
They already have a variance application.
How did that come to us before it went to?
It went to Holly, and Holly told her, this is Holly's directions.
Yeah, it went directly to Holly, and then I was there when you guys brought it in, and then Holly said, gave it to me, and said, this goes to zoning. And made it sound like it was just very simple, clear-cut, front yard setback, wouldn't need much, and then.
Okay, we need some housekeeping.
Yeah, and, you know, you have to forgive me also, I'm going to have to go and look at the procedural requirements and, you know, in the, in the zoning. Like I said, in the previous ones that I did with denial letters and sending them to you, when, you know, I wasn't aware of this until I had a short conversation with the applicant, and I wasn't even aware that they were going for, for a variance. But what I will do is, next time I'm in the office, and I'll speak with Mark tomorrow, is ensure that if there is a procedural, if there's a procedure in the zoning code that says, you know, step one is the application made to the building inspector, step two, a denial, and then, you know, what variance you're requesting, then we'll make sure that the office is following that procedure to the letter.
Yes.
And I'll speak with Holly and make sure of that. And then, and if this is indeed procedurally correct in what they're doing, then we'll, we'll have to discuss that also.
And wouldn't this application be amended, or did they, they just follow the new one?
I reviewed the zoning code with the specific regard to how one does an application.
Holly, in the office, yeah.
One reason why, specifically asking about the planning board, because in the zoning code application format, it says must be reviewed by the planning board, and the planning board said, we don't need to see this, so, but, so that was mentioned, but there was not a specific mention in the application, you know, process format, that said, we have to, you know, knowingly apply for something we know we can't have, and be denied it.
Take away.
And I don't know, and I don't know that, and I don't know that that is the case.
In my files, I don't have any letters from, from Kathy ever denying it, she just had, she had, she actually filled the application for me the last two times out, and that was it.
Okay, but we have been getting applications that have first gone to the building inspector and come with some sort of recommendation, either deny, or, you know, this is the problem, these are the mitigating circumstances, I recommend you. We don't have that kind of technical expertise. We rely on the experts to look at the issue, tell us what the issues are, and what the mitigating circumstances are, and help us make then a measured judgment. And that is a part of the process I feel very strongly should not be overlooked. I, I really want your expertise when you look at this, you have time to look back at whatever has been done, or, you know, whatever. So it's just a procedural thing, I don't want to slow you guys down, but we're lay people, he's an expert, it's how the system works best.
Well, like I said before, and I didn't mean, I didn't mean it just to, you know, to be curt, I look at things from a more, from a enforcement perspective. There's certain requirements in the code, and if they don't meet those, they need a variance. Now, I don't necessarily have an opinion either way, I mean, I may, and I may not, and I don't know, I mean, more as like a consultant, I don't know if there's a building inspector legally able to give you an opinion and say, look, it's my opinion, this variance should be granted.
In the past, we have looked to the building inspector for recommendations.
For some recommendations and guidance, okay, I understand, yep.
Without pointing fingers, this is about the sixth meeting I've sat with you, and similar things have come up. I would suggest, strongly, if you want a procedure, make a recommendation, because there is no procedure. You now have a secretary who is very conversant on planning and zoning issues. She could easily help you with the help of the building department, come up with a process and procedure that you can adopt, and everybody can follow, and the poor applicants aren't out there stuck.
Right, amen. Okay, amen, so, can I make a motion that, I mean, let me think about what the motion is going to be. Would you work with her? That, who else would like to work on a procedure?
I would be willing to work on a procedure.
Okay, Dave?
I won't be here.
Okay.
I've got, I've got two months, so I'll help where I can.
Okay, so, I move that this ad hoc committee of Rob, Egan, Vicki, Danskin, and Ellen Rocco, work with our current secretary to write up a procedure for how an application should proceed, so that it is clear to both applicants and the board how the application has moved and arrived at.
But I think, I think maybe first I should, or one of the enforcement officers, myself or Mark, should review the code, to ensure that there isn't a legal.
Let's put him on the committee.
You know, procedure that's in the zoning code, that for some reason, you know, for past procedure, has not been the procedure, it's just been overlooked. If there's something that's specific in the local law, and says that these three steps need to be followed, then those three steps really need to be followed legally, I would say, per the village code. If those don't exist, then we can, you know, we can come up with some policies, more procedures, you know, that would assist, you know, everyone all around.
Okay, I will amend my motion to both put Rich on the committee, and to ask him to first look into the current legal requirements.
Is there a second to that motion?
A long time ago, and I turned all that stuff into the building department, we may have to do it again.
I think I've found my copies.
Yes, okay.
But you've got somebody who is very conversant, that can just whip that out for you.
And it's something that would need to be discussed with building department.
Yes, they want a new form broken, they talked about that four months ago.
A new form for applicants?
Yes, yes.
Once the procedure is established.
And the building department has to file.
Has to go hand in hand.
Oh, the form was already made.
Apparently Vicki.
No, Vicki, wait, we had a meeting, I think it was a year ago.
There's still a motion.
We got a motion on the floor.
Yeah, okay, I made my motion.
It needs to be seconded.
Is there discussion on this motion?
Wait, who seconded?
Wait, yeah, who?
I have a comment, but not one that should be voted.
Ready to vote? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like some?
Okay.
Just as a note about that, how you might format it, I'd say, perhaps don't make it that you need a denial of an application, but rather that the building department always be copied on variance applications, that way they always see it. But that seems like an odd rigmarole, that you, you know you're going to be denied, you have to get denied, well, it's not as friendly as.
Right, I'm not intent on the denial, but I do value their expertise.
Oh, yes, I would like him to know what was going on.
These were, these are process questions. These were, these are process questions they've been talking about for the last half year.
No, nobody was 100% aware of everything that was going on.
No, it's been a year, Sally, because that's when I.
All right, it's been a year. That's even worse.
Well, I thought you were, when he said he was talking to Holly about it.
May we have a little order here, please?
Thank you.
Is there anything else to come before this quarter tonight?
Well, I just have a question. Um, Dave motioned to amend the ZBA application. I'm wondering if that, if we want to go ahead or if we're not doing that.
Do we have to, do we have to make a motion that they have to come back or is that just a?
No, we don't need a motion.
Just need a revised site plan of taking in feedback from the.
Well, now you're going to have to deal with, you're going to have to deal with all of what we've been talking.
No, what you're asking for is could you just amend this right now? You're wrong though, right?
Well, frequently, designs are modified by discussions with.
Well, if you have to, if you have to give it all to the building inspector anyway, I would assume you would just replace that with this and change the wording in your thing and give it to the building inspector.
Or the way that you approve it is just, you know, we approve theoretically an 18-foot as opposed to a 25-foot front yard.
Yeah, but if this is going to go over to the Ulster County Planning Board, I think it would be better if it went with, or this as opposed to the 25-foot request. That's, that's all I'm thinking.
Just, yeah, just change, just change the stuff. I don't see.
Carl, on a question of process, right now, if there is not some understanding or change or an amendment to their application, the legal notice will be as they applied and that's a 25-foot variance and that's not what they're asking for.
That's what we have on file.
Isn't that right, Brogan?
All right, so what do they have to do? Just reapply?
Could they send, uh, some kind of written communication saying that they're amending the application?
They don't need to reapply, they just need to amend.
Just send something in writing, amending the application and asking that this map be substituted or added to.
That seems very reasonable.
Once in a while.
Is that something they can just do right now with one of the copies and give it to Brogan?
Yeah, you can give me a copy and then we'll send it to the Ulster County Planning Board.
There's your copy.
Right, but just give her something signed saying that.
Do you want to just change the whole copy here? Just going to change it on here to 18?
It sounds like this is going to modify and we don't have to actually try to rewrite the original.
No, just, yeah. Why don't you take?
You need mine.
Okay. 10 feet and then initial it and send it on.
Give it back.
I'm wondering if the county planning board cares about the other previous variance for their information.
What, what's that?
The, the two other variances that you got and you built out.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if they would need to be informed about that, just for their information.
Oh, the Ulster County one, oh.
From 25 feet to 18 feet. Put the date on it and sign, yeah. Or you should both, or whoever initial, put the date where you wrote that and initial it for signing, right?
Do you want to sign?
No, we both have to initial it.
Whoever is the applicant, put the date.
Sign it.
Dated and initialled.
Good. They're not persnickety at the Ulster County Planning Board, are they? I don't think I can because I wasn't at the meeting.
Vicky, Ben, she was.
Yeah. Carl, should we deal with the, with the, um, with the minutes, approve of the minutes now? Okay, so I could, I could. I was not there, right? Oh, I was there. Oh, I was, I remember this. Okay, I can move it.
Did you put on your C-attached new map or something like that?
Are you moving the adoption?
I'll move the adoption of the minutes. You can second. Our secretaries.
18 too?
There's a motion.
Yeah, but Brogan didn't hear.
We're waiting for it.
Okay.
Yeah, I move we approve the minutes.
Right.
You move, okay. Yes.
Second.
It should be.
Talking about two little minutes.
Yes, no.
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now move to adjournment. What's the problem with you?
Is everybody ready for a motion for adjournment?
We're all ready.
Yes, go do it, Vicky.
I move that we adjourn.
No, we've got one more thing to do.
We just approved the minutes.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we adopt the draft zoning board of appeals meetings, uh, December 10th.
That's what we just, we just did that.
We just, huh?
You just voted on it?
I thought we were, I thought we were voting on the other motion. We never voted on the other motion.
No, we.
All right.
We don't need to. So we're.
Okay. So are we sure to adjourn?
Is motion to adjourn? Go to a planning board next. We, we're already doing that, right?
Second day.
Is that correct? We're proceeding to.
All in favor?
All in favor, we're up for adjournment.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody who says no.
Ralph can say no because he just loves it so much. He wants it to never end.